Welcome everyone to this regularly scheduled township supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge of the flag. You're sworn in. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States and to the public which stands on your nation under God. Indivisible, so liberating, and endless. Now my distinct pleasure and honor to swear in our new officer, Colin Snyder. Richard, bring him in. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Colin Snyder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of this commonwealth.
The Constitution's commonwealth.
And the ordinances of Springersbury Township.
And the ordinances of Springersbury Township.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
That I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I pledge to obey and enforce the law.
I pledge to obey and enforce the law.
Without discrimination under federal, state, or local laws.
Without discrimination under federal, state, or local laws.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do a little presentation when we bring new officers on. And first of all, I want to welcome Colin, but it's really welcoming him back because Colin's our first officer to be hired from our community service officer career. So we're really happy about that. Then after attending a six month police academy, he comes back to us. Really welcome him back to the township. At Springersbury Township Police Department, we take our commitment to the community very seriously. It's our belief that we are only temporary stewards of the township. Citizens who are bestowed this profession through community trust in our mission. This dress is fragile and must be protected. So I'm going to present Colin with a reminder of the power of the oath he just took. I'd like to read that to you now. Okay, it's called the Springersbury badge. My lawful appointment and my oath give life and significance to this badge. It is not something that can be earned, it is bestowed. It is a symbol of power and authority granted by law through public trust. It transforms carefully selected community members into guardians whose mandate is to honorably serve and visually protect their communities. My acceptance of this badge requires a significant commitment. A commitment requiring focus, self-development, honor, courage, and a pursuit of my professional and personal potential. I will honor all that my badge represents for the brief time that I am privileged to be entrusted with this candidate. I'm going to present that to you as a reminder in the future. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, you don't want to stay for all the fun part? There have been no executive sessions since our last meeting, so at this point I would like to open up the floor to communication from citizens. And if there's anybody on Zoom that would like to address the board, you can click the raise hand button and we acknowledge you. Please. Up to the podium and welcome.
I am Ethan McGee. I live in Springersbury Township and I am looking for an Eagle project, so I was asking if you have any Eagle projects you think I could do?
So there may be some. And we can work with you to do one. I know that there was one that was teed up a few years ago that never, that never happened, that comes to the top of my mind. But our township manager would be very happy to work with you to come up with a project.
Because another project that I was thinking about doing is I was thinking about going to one of our local fire stations and making a drying rack for their suits and boots. So in between missions they can put on. They don't have like suits in.
Interesting thought. So I'm sure that our manager can interface with our chief police. I don't see saying, I mean our chief of fire. Our chief, our fire, our people police just left. Our fire chief usually sits in the back corner directly, but he's not back here today, so.
It is battalion chief.
That's a battalion chief, okay. So maybe, maybe you guys could work with this gentleman to see if there's something that he could do for the, for the fire department.
I will get you my contact information while we be talking on and you can reach out to me at your convenience.
Thank you.
Ethan, I didn't capture your last name, I'm sorry.
McGee. Like the mouse and I can hang you off.
You're supposed to sing that part.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board this evening? All right then, what I would like to do at this point with okay from my fellow supervisors is bring Krista up now for the township financial statements.
Thank you, I appreciate being moved up. I do love spending my time at municipal meetings, but
That's fine.
So I, and thank you to Mark for printing out a couple of copies for everyone. We were having some technical difficulties hoping to get it on the screen. I think we'd be going over preliminary audit results for 2022. We are not finding yet. We think we're pretty darn close. We're not expecting any significant adjustments at this point. So Terry and I will continue working to get everything finalized. Once that's done, you'll have all the final documents, final presentation, et cetera. If anything would come up of significance that changes, we'll make sure you're aware of what that change was. But just want to go ahead in, in lieu of timeline, I wanted to be able to present it to you and my duty is a week from tomorrow, so. My son came a week early, so it's a little stressful right now. All right, so just a couple of reminders. I'm going to go through the first couple of slides quickly. On page one, responsibilities. So we as your auditor are responsible for performing our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And our goal is to form and express an opinion about whether your financial statements are materially correct, fairly presented, and conform with generally accepted accounting principles. So just a reminder, your financial statements are on the accrual basis of accounting, not cash basis. So we record revenues when they're earned, we record expenses when you're liable. You have things like debt, fixed assets, receivables, payables on your books, where other municipalities are on a more simplified cash basis. That's no change, that's just how your township has presented its full financial statements for many years. And then I am required to communicate significant matters with you, which I'm doing now. A reminder, an audit provides reasonable, not absolute assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement due to broader error, and it does not relieve those charge of governance or management of any of your parts of internal controls, processes, procedures. Having an audit done is not a control, so we just always like to remind everyone that that's not a control that the township has. It's essentially in addition, we come in, we look at everything, we're independent, but we are not there watching everything that happens during the year. And as we'll talk about in a few slides, when we perform our audit, we don't test 100% of the transactions either. On the next slide also says responsibilities at the top, so the township is responsible for preparing and fairly presenting the financial statements, designing, implementing, evaluating, and maintaining effective internal controls over all aspects of your financial reporting process. During the audit, providing us with unrestricted access to any documents we may need to review, any people we might need to make inquiries of. If there would be any fraud, illegal acts, material weaknesses, or significant deficiencies, making us aware of those, and we were not made aware of any. Subsequent events. So this is the audit of 2022 up through when we date the report. That is held the subsequent event period. If there's anything that happens during that timeframe that would influence someone reading your financial statements, we have to determine whether or not it's material enough to also include in those statements as a subsequent event item. And also we do testing of subsequent events to make sure that everything has been properly recorded in the correct period. And then most of all of this is encompassed in a letter which we will sign off on, management will sign off on when we finalize the audit. This slide that has audit scope at the top, this talks a little bit how the audit works. So we are not required to test internal controls of the township, but we are required to understand them. That's always our first spot is what has changed from the year before? What new programs you have, new major expense categories, processes, procedures, what individuals have changed as part of those processes? And then from that, that's where we develop a risk assessment. Audits are all based on risk. So that's where we have to put our auditor hat on and say what could go wrong. It's never saying something has or would, but we have to say what could go wrong. And then from there, we design our audit procedures. It's up to us to be able to do enough audit procedures to be able to give that audit opinion. So I said before, we test everything, so what we do is we calculate what's called materiality. Materiality is going to be the quantitative or dollar amount of thresholds, but we also take into, like I said, other risks in how we test, what we test. But essentially that's going to help us determine different thresholds for testing, maybe 100% over a certain threshold or being able to sample populations. Obviously, as we go through our testing, if things come up, things change, sometimes we add procedures, change procedures, et cetera, in order to be able to give that audit a check in. Adjustments. So usually there are journal entries that are related to the audit as we go through the process. Those are preliminary at this, at this point in time, the numbers you're seeing have all of our proposed entry been done. And we have gone over those for Terry, but the final journal entries will be attached. So audit results, obviously this is a draft and preliminary, but we are anticipating an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the financial statement, so no change from prior years there. The next couple of slides, I'm going to go for even quicker. We as a firm have complied with all ethics requirements and we are independent of the township. As far as significant accounting policies, meaning how you record your transactions, the only change for 2022 was the implementation of Gatsby 87, which is in regards to leases. So there was a new lease standard that came out. This is really going to affect all of your enterprise vehicle leases. The nice thing about that is that is not a fund level adjustment, that is a government wide full accrual adjustment. So on your DCD report, we won't see that, but when you get your full financial statements, that section in the front, that's full accrual, that's where that will be implemented. You do have a couple of other leases that essentially would apply to fund level, but they're immaterial and we can say we're going to pass on them rather than going through the process of putting them on the books under the new implementation standard. The next slide talks about counting estimates, really no change from prior years, but just to note that there are estimates that go into your financial statements. Some of them are going to be larger than others. Depreciation is an example of that, where you're estimating use to lives of fixed assets for depreciation. Also with your pension plan, you get an actuarial evaluation every year, and there are several assumptions and estimates that go into those calculations. There could be other estimates that happen throughout the audit period and throughout the year when management is making transactions. And part of our audit responsibility is to assess the reasonableness of those estimates year over year. No difficulties encountered, no disagreements, and essentially those last two go over anything that's required to be included in the presentation I've included. And again, you'll get the final presentation once we sign off. So the slide I'm on now says matters of internal control at the top. This is where we are required to disclose to you as those charge of governance, anything that we consider to be a material weakness or a step down, a significant deficiency in internal difficulty. So we are still in draft form of this, the one thing I did want to touch on is last year we did have a material weakness related to your sewer fund fixed asset calculations. And I do believe that this year we will probably be stepping that down to a significant deficiency with the hope of having that removed for your 2023 audit. We did have to do a few adjustments on sewer fund fixed assets this year, but it was a lot less than we had to do in the past couple of years that created that material weakness. So kudos to township on making some efforts to get those changes in place. I think we have a couple of more things to take care of and then hopefully that will be a moot point and we won't have an issue with sewer fund fixed assets going forward. So now I'm on the page that sets financial highlights at the top. I'll pause there just to make sure there aren't any questions on all of the information I quickly went through. Although it's not the fun number, so now's where we get to dig in. So what I have on this slide here is a general fund budget versus actual. This is high level pointing out revenues and expenses in total. So you'll see in the left hand column your 22 budget, middle column is going to be your actual, and then it's going to be the variance on the right hand column. Your total revenues and other financing sources budgeted for 2022 were about 18.6 million. You'll see, I left the block on there for use of fund balance. In prior years, we have had some use of fund balance to balance the budget. You did not have that for 2022. So I just wanted to point that out for 2022, there was no planned use of fund balance to balance the budget. So then your expenditure equaled the same about 18.6 million for 2022. Your results, revenues came in at just under 19 million, so about 375,000 over budget. And your expenses came in at about 17.6 million or about $1 million under budget. So you had a favorable variance from the budget of about 1.4 million. On the next slide, I'm going to dig into that a little bit more detail on the revenues. So the first one I want to point out is your tax revenues. So you came in about $1 million over budget on the tax revenues. And this is primarily related to EIT and real estate transfer tax, which is really hard to pin down when we're doing the budget process. I think a lot of us expected to see more of a decline in 2022 than we definitely did. Even hearing from some halfway through 23, we haven't seen as much of a decline as we expected as things kind of shake out with inflation. But this has been across the board, where a lot of municipalities in our area have seen, you know, some strong numbers in that real estate transfer tax and EIT. It'll be interesting to see if we get through the second half of 23, what really happens there on those tax streams. The other one item I wanted to point out was in green, it's the intergovernmental revenues. So this looks a little wonky. It shows that you are under budget by 850,000. There's really two items that are in there. The one item is you had budgeted for your ARPA funds that you received in 22 to come into the general fund. Those ARPA funds actually went into a separate special revenue fund and were not used. So there was no recognized revenue for ARPA funding in 2022. So that's part of that, about 1.4 million decrease from your budget, but then you actually had an increase in your gaming proceeds from 2022. So they netted together looking like you were under budget of about 850,000. If we took that ARPA piece out, you were actually over budget in your intergovernmental revenues. So that was really just a placement of where those ARPA funds were budgeted for. Any question on that? Because that's a little unusual.
Are the gaming revenues part of that line?
They are, yes. And so that's why you don't see a total under budget of 1.4 million. It's a net number of about 850,000.
So where would we see those?
So the ARPA funds are in a separate revenue fund in their own fund, and you won't earn any of these numbers because it's just general fund. I will speak to the ARPA fund, no before and depreciation. And then the last item that I have highlighted there is your charges for services, which were over budget. Again, revenues about 230,000, and that's mainly due to building permits. Again, that's a hard one to budget for. So it had a big permit that came through in 2022, so it just depends on the development and building that you have in the township. So just a little bit more detail or a snapshot of the revenues. I did not provide the same thing on the expense side at this point. Really the expenses are kind of across the board. It wasn't any major item like I'm just putting out here on the revenue. But what I did do on the next side is kind of give you a three year trend analysis for the general fund. This includes your revenues at the top, your expenses in the middle, and then other financing sources and uses, use of at the bottom. This also kind of shows you essentially your breakout of where your revenues and expenses come from as far as the percentage. So you can see real estate tax revenues were about 19% of your total revenues in 22, about 21% in 21, and 23% in 20. Just to kind of give you a snapshot of where things have gone the past three years. At the very bottom, I also pointed out that you had an increase in revenues from 21 to 22 of about 1.9 million or 11%. And you had a decrease in expenses from 21 to 22 of about 1.3 million or about 8%. So total change for the general fund of 2022, it was a positive 1.4. Any questions regarding to the sewer fund?
Just one, you mentioned that 22 would be, would be adopt that change for leases.
Yes.
Do we know how that impacts the expenses really when you're about lower, if it hadn't that enough adopted, the expenses would have been higher or lower?
So actually no effect on your general fund because your general fund is on the modified accrual basis. It's only going to come into play when you look at those full accrual Gatsby 34 statements, so not affecting the numbers here. To be honest, what the implementation actually does is it just roasts up your balance sheet. So it's going to take any kind of lease and essentially say, okay, that lease is worth X number of dollars over the life of the term. If present value calculates it, then it puts it on the balance sheet as a right of use asset. And it essentially has deferred outflows, meaning future payments will be paid against, against it. The ultimate income statement impact is not really that large because you've already like, you'll be making those payments each year. It's just based on the present value calculation, what's considered principal and what's considered interest. You have already been showing all of those leases as capital leases. It's just there's no longer the term capital lease anymore. It's now this right of use asset. So on your side of things, not a significant change. Whereas some municipalities have cell phone towers that they rent, it's a lot of rental income. You do have some rental income, but it fell under the threshold that we essentially could pass on and then say not worth going through all the calculations and changing the way it's shown. Any other questions on the general fund? All right, last slide I have then is on the sewer fund. Just wanted to give you a snapshot of 2022 here. So your total operating revenues were about 8.6 million. You can see how that's broken out regular charges for services, charging the services intergovernmental, and then just some miscellaneous refund items there at the top. Operating expenses, you got about 5 million of cost of services, 360,000 that's paid to the township for administration. And then you have a little asterisk for depreciation there, so you got about 3.6 million of depreciation. Just a reminder, that's a non-cash expense, but it is an expense on your books. We do have non-operating revenues and expenses. This is an accounting term essentially what we consider. It's not related to the core quote unquote business of the sewer fund, but you have tapping fees, interest expense, investment earnings, which unfortunately in 22 was quite the negative number, but we're seeing an increase there in 2023. Many transfers that happen in cash, capital contributions, which are also non-cash. So that would be the easements, roadways, et cetera, related to sewer that are being turned over to the township. That is essentially like a donation of those items. So your total results for the sewer fund were, was a decrease of about 31,000 for the year. Two other things to note, not on a slide, but capital projects. Obviously, a lot of activity was happening in capital projects fund for 2022. You had about $11 million set expenses in your capital projects fund, most of that being related to the building. And then also just to point out on that ARPA fund, so the revenue that was for the cash that was received in 2021 and in 2022, which totaled about 2.8 million, that is being shown as deferred revenue. So that revenue will not actually hit your income statement and be recognized until you utilize those funds. And that's just because it's based on a, it's a federal brand and that's how we show things. We don't recognize the revenue until we have the eligible expenses. So when you spend the money for the ARPA fund, you'll have the offsetting revenue then that comes into play as well.
Is that because it's not really our money and we'd have to give it back if they don't spend it?
I mean, yeah, you could say it that way. Until it's essentially a contingency until you spend it how it's supposed to be. And just a reminder, you have until 2024 to commit those funds under contract and they need to be paid out by the end of 2026. And we've, Mark and I and Terry have talked about that and we've got some plans in place, yeah.
And Krista, if, not to put you on the spot, but if you wanted give the board your synopsis of our conversation about using our funds for, for expenses.
So it's a little, I will use the word sinagling. But essentially, when the federal government came back and said, up to $10 million you can use as revenue loss. They really made the process much easier, essentially saying as long as you got under 10 million, you can use it towards revenue loss. The reporting became a lot more simple. You just say, hey, we're using it towards revenue loss. You don't have to prove revenue loss. You don't really have to track it as a project. So the other pieces of those ARPA funds are specifically related to COVID, sewer, water, et cetera. So what that does is it really kind of says to all of our municipalities, what's the easiest way to use these funds for tracking purposes? And that's where a lot of municipalities have kind of looked at their big ticket items and said, you know, we're going to apply it to this expense category. And then what that does is open those revenues or open those revenues that you would normally spend on those expenses to be used in other ways. So it's kind of an indirect use of your ARPA funds. It just makes the process a lot more simple and reporting it to the federal government. And it's absolutely allowed. It's not like it's an illegal type thing, but essentially the one thing we've reminded everyone is just remember that it's a one time or two time depending on how you spread it out over the years. Additional income that you will have to account for later on. So, you know, when we're using it towards fire expenses or some are using it towards police expenses, if they have regionalized police, remember that in a year or two after you've used those funds, they'll have to come back into your general fund as far as, you know, fully extending those funds out of the general fund, not having the additional ARPA funds. So that's the only thing I've just cautioned everyone to just remember that. But that has then opened up those additional funds for other purposes.
Can you provide a little more background on the, back to the sewer fund, the investment loss? Terms of what those investments were in our, that size of a loss?
The way I read it, that's a George, that's an actual income loss.
So it is, it is marked to fair market value, so any unrealized gains are booked on your sewer fund. So that could be, I would have to look at the detail. Yeah.
Because that would make.
I'll double check that and get, get to you on what's in that number there.
Why ask that? Because I thought the fund balance, sewer fund balance, the types of things that money could be invested in. That's unsurprised, there's no restricted options of generally.
Yeah, so all investments of the township are restricted under the, what you're talking about as far as cash and investment rules. Who do, who's the sewer fund investments there? We have everything. It is all plugged in now, right? Okay. I'll have to look and see to make sure that that is categorized correctly and then we'll let you know.
So overall, based, you know, I'm really talking general revenues, did you have any insight why are your municipalities abstaining for 2022 or are they saying like some net cash flow or?
No, I think this is across the board pretty, pretty similar, especially like I said, in real estate transfer tax and EIT. It's kind of, we don't have a crystal ball to figure out where things are going to flow. Obviously, it depends on the municipality, what other income streams, obviously you've got gaming that a lot around us do not have. But then again, expenses, it kind of depends on what you have versus others. One of the things that I think we're also seeing, and I think you've seen this a little bit too, is position turnover. I think every industry has dealt with changes of position or, you know, budgeting additional positions, changes of position, benefit costs continue to go up. I know we were talking about healthcare costs, they were the percent increase for you for 2022. So I, I mean, we're all feeling that, especially all those that are embedded on, so it's not quite the same, but pretty similar across the board. Nothing out of the ordinary that I would say, obviously a good, good year for you. A lot of things kind of lined up as far as additional funding. But you also had a lot going on with the project, which I hear is almost, almost, right? But yeah, nothing that really sticks out as far as any major differences between other municipalities around here. Sure. Any other questions for me?
I think what Charles wanted you to say was sort of this stellar foundation.
That is what I meant. You're, you're a complex and large municipality compared to those around you. Like I said, you've got some neighboring municipalities that operate on the cash basis. They're not reporting at the level you are. So it is, it is hard to compare apples to apples on some of those areas as well. But yes, kudos to Terry trying to keep track of everything and thinking forward and looking ahead for what's to come.
Don, anything? Thank you very much.
Of course, and as we finalize everything, you'll get final documents. If there's any questions that come up, Terry knows how to reach me and we'll go from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, where are we? Okay, next we have our engineering works. Jim and Brian, now, Diane.
Just one quick update to the report. I'm finally happy to say that the project, as we started, script and science is done. All the projects are done.
Thank you. Mr. Lucciani.
I just have one quick update. People have some questions, but I was out at Baby's Drive today and the curb had been placed. You know, the manager inspected this evening. And while I was out there, I happened to catch the contractor, which is called Diamondback, says that their work will take about two weeks. But manager asked me already, you have a date when it's going to start? I didn't get that yet, but that's tomorrow morning's first phone call. But we did, I did report that we found a flat area in Culbissack when the county had built it. The only way to make that drain was to change the profile a little bit. So there was some additional work there. And it looks, you know, we have a little down and an up and then our normally profile we go to south and the roadway looks pretty good. I think it's going to be drivable. I was complaining to my inspector, the guy that made that page, that the police are going to go over that a hundred. Their wheels leaving ground, we're going to hear about it. I, I don't think that will happen, so. And the road looks pretty good and I think we're going to be happy when we're going to get the, the rhythm of that location. But we're thinking, you know, in sixty days, whether we'll be there. Speaking of wheels leaving the ground.
Oh, no, here we go.
Has the township, has anybody approached the township about Ridgewood Road? Ridgewood Road, just beyond North Hills Road?
We're aware of it. That's our roadway, so. But there, we're aware of it. We put the dip sign in, the Lord Peoples, there's a dip, that's a toll-free lane. We can find out what's causing it. We thought that the water was following the sewer line and undermining the soil, but we don't have a sag in the sewer line, so we're at a loss of why it's happening.
But you aren't supposed to be driving a hundred miles.
You remember, there was twenty-five.
We haven't given up on it. We just would like to know the cause instead of just throwing things at it hoping we fix it.
Is it getting worse?
It's hard to say. It's definitely, if I had to say it's worse, it's worse than two years ago. And that worse today than it was a month ago, that's too hard to determine.
So what we're talking about roadways? Any word from PennDOT on Mount Zion Roadie?
I was able to reach out to PennDOT after the last meeting and talk about some of the comments, mostly about their patchwork of their existing. And he, the person I talked to said that he would talk to the onsite project manager and get the best they can do out of the contractor. I did see the contractor put some cold patch in, but I don't know if it really made any difference. I reached out this past Tuesday to the project, the, the original guy I spoke to is now on long-term leave for one reason or another. So it's a new person I got directed to. That's a message for him Tuesday and I haven't heard back. Yeah.
No word on what they're doing with some of those open ones?
I mean, find out and I, he hasn't called.
Couple of them just make no sense. I'm not the traffic engineer, the mister of the town. Anything else, John?
I don't have anything else on what kind of question.
All right, next we have our consent agenda item eight. Is there anything that anyone would like to have removed for further discussion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items eight, please. Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bits, proposals, contracts and agreements, authorization for the project manager to execute additional service requests from the current one architects for the township building renovation and expansion project in amount of exceed seventy-eight thousand five hundred and sixty dollars.
Mr. Chairman, this is very similar to the last additional request due to the delays.
Mr. Chairman, a move for authorization for the township manager to execute a service request for the current architects for Springs Ferry Township Building Renovation Expansion Project in the amount of exceed seventy-eight thousand five hundred and sixty.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Locust Grove Road, Wilshire Drive subdivision, PennDOT co-applicant agreements.
Chairman, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Luciano and Mr. Highland to explore it.
Yes, this is obviously in regard to the project that you a month ago accrued, if you will, and they had to do some things to get to this work. So you have the plan back there on the table. Hopefully it's signed, it's sent by the board. But this is an agreement that I have no experience on in respect to. It's something that's new with PennDOT in regard to the pipe that's in PennDOT right of way on Locust Grove Road is part of the proposed lot four for this project. And we're submitting a co-applicant agreement for the HOP for the stormwater management facility there. It's between the applicant or the land property owner and the township. So we, in effect, go together with this in, in the sense that they're obligated, so the township for any maintenance or anything that's comes about with the replacement of a portion of this pipe. Also.
Is that similar to the agreement that we had to do with Mont, Mont Zion Road? The.
That was invalid.
Wasn't valid.
Yes, that important company.
Yeah.
It's the same. And also in sheets.
They wanted, they wanted us in the game.
PennDOT looks to the local municipality, fixes anything or maintain it. And this dugs it back off on the land. So this pipe went in front of one of the lots and the agreement will be recorded, it runs with the land and so the landowner, future landowner is going to be responsible for this pipe. If they don't fix it, then the township can go in, under this agreement, go in and fix it and then and charge it against the land. The only difference with this agreement, in the past, with one we did to Pleasant Valley and the sheets, it was basically indemnification. We did not take any escrow money because basically you wouldn't be holding for twenty years and it's just very complex. And we have other means if we had to, to take care of the problem. So this agreement has the alternative of an escrow or a bonding, that's blank. And for me, the other agreements, I mean indemnification, sometimes is only as good as the paper it's written on, depending who's giving you the indication. But we have additional remedies in terms of leaning the property. So doesn't overly concern me not to establish an escrow, which I tell you will probably be, probably be more trouble than it's worth, particularly if you have a number one. So in any event, they signed the agreement. It's a, it would be a standard agreement from PennDOT, but it has all the indemnification language in it. From that perspective, I'm okay.
So what I'll obviously, we need the signature of the chair, the board, so we and then it notarized and then it reported with the complaint itself. But this has to be, you know, part of what transpires prior to recording the player. It needs to accompany that plan. So that's why it's here tonight for your consideration.
So we need a motion to authorize me to sign.
I don't, I only received the agreement yesterday from the prosecutor. I said yesterday.
But the solicitor has seen it and.
Yes, he received fire copy.
And so, just so I understand, the pipe of questions is on a piece of property. Is it the developer's property or will it be in?
Currently it's the developer.
Currently it's the developer.
But he's going to sell a lot.
Sell a lot, so then would this be a restriction or some sort of permanent?
Well, I, I don't know if it's really on the D, but the agreement is going to be recorded, so.
Oh, so that's how.
Yes.
There is a plan note on the.
And so, plan. Probably both of which the landowner wanted to see, but.
Or even. The surprise you might get, yeah.
You got, I'm open to title search. Yeah, it does. It doesn't guarantee that the landowner or homeowner is going to be made aware, sure.
Right.
Gentlemen. For discussion or for information.
And it's a trade party to create a, 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 a township developer.
Just township developer.
Development.
Why does it say PennDOT co-applicant?
It's being informed.
They're, they're required agreement before they go plow.
You're probably, we see more of these. It's a new, if there's storm waters, if there's stormwater facilities, you're being touched.
I move to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
Second. I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Indication from supervisors. Everybody have anything? Thank you, Randall.
Thank you.
Working your magic on the corner across the street.
Oh. Appreciate that. It was a lot of conversations with the property, both through emails and through telephone communication.
Sure, my neighbors are going to be happy.
I welcome that.
Solicitors report, Charlie.
I don't have anything in addition.
Or, and it's a support.
The only thing that I'll add to my written report is if you've been past the township municipal complex, former police building is no longer there. Um, with that, the site work is progressing quickly. Um, today, yesterday and today, there were a lot of unsuitable soil discovered around the old police station, which unsuitable soil for, lack of better words, is spongy soil, spongy subgrade, clay, clay soil that got saturated over time or unsuitable to put roadway or parking lot over that. So they have to over excavate, which they have been doing mostly today, filled in with ballast stone and some other things, but under Jones' direction. So that'll be obviously a change. I don't have a number for that. It's going to be a kind of material basis, but we definitely can't have a parking lot breaking up over time over soft subgrids. So that, that's the only thing to report, but you'd like, it's going to be open here within the next couple of weeks.
So what does that do to the timeline for the party? Do you have an estimate for how long that's going to push things back?
York excavation, who is the son to the general, told me that it probably won't. They, yesterday and today, if you were standing, paying attention, they would ran you over. That's how people were there, it was like a beehive. So, which is all a good thing. So Yorkex is definitely in high gear wanting to get this done, so the curbs are supposed to be poured down through the day. That'll probably take a day or two at max. They, they have to sit for a couple of days and then they'll be right in with paving and. So I hesitate, given the date of when you should be open because I was right since I've started saying that date, but within the next couple of weeks, we should be open.
So is that a beehive or a freud yard that long?
Yes.
Any other questions for the manager?
So I was just curious about one thing. This is for the chief. So what is all entitled or entailed in National Maya? What's that program going to look like next Tuesday?
Well, we might open in partnership, put up stands and agree with the citizens of township. We will take up a circle near the top of the building to do that. And we also, getting away from the hot dogs are donated by some of our businesses in Walmart. So every street party, purpose solvers, supplies we need for that. That's always going to be positive and positive. And there are all sorts of schemes that will happen. We always do to entertain children. Do positive. Since we must be banned this year, goodbye. Don't be banned because of my sergeant.
That's fine to A, correct? Anything else?
Okay. Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five revised fee schedule.
Mr. Chairman, the majority of the revised fees in this resolution are related to the community room rentals. We have several options for folks. We have several options for folks. Um, during the week rentals, which will probably be geared more, they're on an hourly basis for the two hour minimum. That would probably be geared more towards businesses that they want to use it, but it's not restricted to them. But in our mindset, that would probably be more inclined in that way. And then. Friday evening, you can do a half a rental, half a day rental. Until ten P M. And then Saturday and Sunday, you can choose either a half a day or a whole day. Remember. And our fees that we're proposing are in line with. Other municipalities with similar spaces.
adopted resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty five.
Second.
Also something on. I have a motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Resolution. Twenty twenty three dash thirty six, joint maintenance and repair services for traffic control devices.
Mr. Chairman, as I stated in my manager's report, our former. Traffic signal maintenance contractor passed away, um, back in May. And. Uh, several municipalities within the greater York area. Have expressed interest. Uh, one another to do a joint. Maintenance contract, Spring and Sperry being one of them. Um, so this resolution, which was drafted by Charlie Orwell's your township.
This is a free.
Nothing's free.
So your township may have paid for this fee service. This is just, we haven't, we're working as a group, manager group, we're working on specifications themselves. But later time, that is kind of, this is just the intergovernmental cooperation.
The chairman, I move for adoption of resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty six, resolution township Springsberry, authorizing interim governmental cooperation for joint maintenance. And repair services for traffic control devices.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty seven, designation of additional depository. Let's get this one.
Do you want to take this?
You can. Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of resolution number twenty twenty three dash thirty seven. Moving an amendment to the designated depositories about the January third from two.
One second. Can I ask a question for a second? Back during the quarter's presentation, there was a question about the one thousand dollar loss. Thought I heard Plague has been mentioned as possible source of.
Yeah, I think, I think the information, uh, if there are two accounts that we mentioned. So we do have that's been, uh, they, um, for all of our accounts, it's one of these ones.
But it's good.
I think it is good, yes. So losses that are.
So a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Old business, traffic calming. Any word on that? We put those, uh.
We did not put them in, it's all hard to do this. Public works has been. Pretty occupied here ever since moving the police department in your building, they've been. Other, other tasks they have to do, so we'll. It's all hard to do this.
For when? For when?
We'll cherish the date.
We'll have them in here in the next. Two or three weeks.
I'm sorry, can you refresh me on what is being added?
Speed hubs.
Got it, okay.
Those roadways. Temporary speed hubs.
Okay.
How's the, um, traffic circulation there, you know?
I have not received any calls. The end there.
No news is good news?
But as we said in our public meeting with neighbors, really, they're, they're probably seeing less traffic now because. You can't get through even its lane to the city. When they open that, they can close, Sherman Street's going to be. The thing.
So it's just, let's just make sure we get that buttoned up before that happens, so that.
Well, we'll definitely have it, is that, that's probably another six or eight months until we're done with the even turning bridge.
But I mean, just making sure we have circulation right for that piece of it, we talked about it, I don't recall what it was, but.
It was different right away or one way or ways.
Yep.
We'll have all that in after.
Um, American Rescue Plan, we talked about. Anything else on here that we need to talk about at this time? Anybody?
Okay.
That takes us to the end of our agenda. Any adjournments, thank you everyone.